Thank you for coming. My name is Michelle Mayans and I am the Ask to Know founder and producer. So, I want to know, does anybody want to be president of the United States? How about governor? Yeah, right back there. Do we have a mayor, maybe a future mayor? Wow. And that's very appropriate because this is where it all starts. If you want to be mayor of Culver City, you've got to go through this process. So, I'm very excited that you're all here and I'm very excited that the candidates, all seven of them, have agreed to be in the hot seat where the kids ask, students, ask all the questions. But I do say kids because we do have first graders. I have a first grader supposedly who might be here asking a question. So, I really wanted to open it up to everybody because I think it's important to get involved in the political process. This is a very interesting and historical election year. From the presidential race that we have going, we have the potential to elect the first woman president, to the first reality star president, and the first Jewish president. But Culver City, parallel to that, has a very historical election as well because we have the potential to elect the first African American ever, and since our city's been incorporated, and that's 100 years next year. And we have the potential to, yes, also elect the first Filipino. So, I'm super excited to be doing this. And I just want to tell you a little, just a quick little thing about me and what I do. So, I take kids, maybe four or five times a year, to the White House. And I'm always looking for kids. So, if you guys are interested, we've interviewed Obama, we've interviewed Vice President Biden, we go to Air Force One. I love getting students involved in this process. So, please talk to me or go to my website, kidscoopmedia.org, and learn more information about that. I also want to say thank you to the most amazing woman who helped me five years ago when I first pitched this idea. I had this crazy idea, I'm like, "I want to get young people involved in this whole political process. What do you think?" Most people kind of thought, "Kids don't care. Young people don't care. Students don't care." But I'm like, "No, I know somewhere deep down, they've got to care," you know? So, I did it, I produced it with Genevieve Gilbert-Rolf, this amazing teacher. She got behind it. And it's really, truly because of her that her students started coming. And then the word got out to the community that this was a super cool, amazing forum. And I also want to say thank you tonight to West LA College for giving us the space. It was always so beautiful and kind to us. I want to thank Culver Studios Piology for donating these 250 gift cards, okay, for people to come. If you guys write a little piece about tonight, I want to thank the Exchange Club of Culver City, McComb Orthodontics, the Culver Hotel, January and Plumbing, Craig Abrams Chiropractics, and Dr. Sonda Moldovan. So, this would not be possible without volunteers. And I have the most amazing volunteer within the parent community, and that's Mara Neufeld, who does a lot of work in the community. And Rose Correch, who's been there, I mean, as well, just amazing volunteers. So, thank you guys so much for that. And now, I want to, and I also want to say that any proceeds that we make, because the candidates contributed to making this happen as well, go to Homeless Not Toothless, which is a nonprofit to help the homeless youth in Los Angeles. And just so you know, there's 44,000 homeless youth in Los Angeles, and that's about the size of Culver City. That's about the residents that we have in Culver City. So, it's a lot of people that are homeless. So, this organization's fantastic in helping them. And so, now, without any further ado, I just want to introduce you to the teacher that I mentioned, Ms. Gilbert-Rolf. Please, thank you.
Hello and welcome to everyone who came tonight and the candidates. And again, thank you to West LA for hosting this event and to Michelle, who has organized these over and over again for us. She did the school board forum, and we had that the last time. And I just wanted to, I've told my students this also, but a couple of things that came up during that forum have actually come to pass. So, now, student athletes can get more than one lunch when they're going to be at school all day and have practice after school, which is wonderful. And also, the middle school water apparently doesn't taste like fish anymore. It's tasty, drinkable water. And the school board is considering whether or not we should start the school day later, which came up in that forum. So, your voices were heard. And of course, the other part of that is we have very receptive and responsive public servants in Culver City. And so, I want to thank you all for coming tonight and giving us your time. I know you're busy with the campaign. We have great expectations for tonight. And as I was looking over the questions that my students will be asking you, I noticed there's a sort of theme that emerged, and that is that this is also their city. And they want to ask you questions about how you're going to make it better for them. Before we begin, though, there's an issue that's come up at the high school, and my students know all about it. But I just wanted to take this opportunity briefly to clear the air, if possible, about that. The incident was a student who took a picture of, when one of our clubs got together, the Black Student Union, they wanted to take a picture for the end of Black History Month. And as they gathered together, someone took a picture of them and posted it on social media with a very disrespectful and hurtful caption. The students of BSU really have been so adult and honorable about the way they have dealt with this issue. And that's, I wanted to let you hear from the president of BSU. There you are. This is Adeline. I'm going to say your last name wrong. Rikanjah?
You did good.
Oh, I did it. And she's going to just repeat what you heard today on the announcements, but the parents and also community members have not heard.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. I just wanted to say, like, apologize for reading it off my phone. I haven't had it memorized yet because we actually just, like, came out with a public statement today. So, but I'll just start. Due to the incident that took place Friday, February 26th, and as a president of Black Student Union, or BSU, we would like to express our feelings regarding the situation and positive aspects in the process. First and foremost, we have to acknowledge and appreciate our BSU members and everyone for exemplifying leadership and representing our club in a positive manner. Contrary to belief, BSU had not been denied the right to wear black or take a club picture. BSU as a whole, along with other several students, felt extremely disrespected and disappointed with the immediate action taken. We recognize administration didn't have the intention to offend the student body, excuse me, they didn't have the intention to offend the student body. However, that is not how it was perceived at the time. Administration will show their, administration will show, excuse me, one second, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yeah, give me one second. Administration will show their support by continuing to support BSU in this endeavor. In regard to the picture that was shared on social media with the unjustifiable and demeaning caption, we as a club and as a school have a zero tolerance policy for such blatant disrespect. Although some have taken this lightheartedly, jokes about oppression are never acceptable. In light of this event, we collectively agree and admit that our school is not perfect. Racism is an issue everywhere, and that does not exclude our campus. However, we also believe that the actions of individuals should not define Culver City High School, should not define Culver City High School's students, staff, and community. We appreciate everyone's support, and we will continue to unite in the face of adversity despite ignorance. We aspire to move forward from this unfortunate event and encourage unity within our club, our school, and our community. Thank you.
Right before we get started, I just need to, and would love to interview, introduce to you, the president of West LA College.
I have to compliment the BSU statement that was just made. I thought it was a fantastic thing to say and such an engaging way to deal with something that's really probably quite upsetting for all of them, and to translate that into something that's probably going to be very educational for the high school for a long time to come. Thank you all for being here tonight. I think it's great. And I have to say that I think the Ask to Know phenomenon is going to spread. I certainly have shared it with the other eight presidents in the Community College District and have shared what a wonderful event this is. And I think we're going to have to be looking for some grant money to help support this with you all because I think we just need to grow it and sustain it. Very interested in those trips to the White House, too, if you ever did something more than with children. But with you children, first and foremost, you children, all of you, welcome and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. I want to ask the moderators if they'll introduce themselves.
Okay, so, hi, my name is Kirsten Blake, and I'm from Culver High School.
Hi, my name is Kai Kim, and I'm from El Roble Middle School.
We have, to begin with, we had a question from Hadley. I don't know if Hadley, is that you, Hadley? Could you, that mic is a little, oh, I'm sorry, we decided to do that. Hadley, as you get the mic adjusted, could you guys introduce yourselves for us? Just start here and go down. Yes?
Is this the one-minute opening statement?
Okay. So, we have Goran Erikson first, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, hi, my name is Joran Erikson, and I'm a foreign-born. I came here to the United States when I was 27 years old, and I had $6,000 on my pocket, and together with my wife, Britta, who sits there, we were looking for the American dream, and I think we really have come a long way and reaching that. And part of that is, of course, to get involved in civic duties, which I think is really important, and I hope you all consider, to contribute to your community. I think that's one thing I brought with me from Sweden, is the importance of engagement into society. So, I've been living here for 33 years in the United States and 27 years in Culver City. Have a small business with my wife, we have 10 employees, and some of your predecessors here at the high school have actually worked some summer hours and on holidays in our office, sorting papers and dealing with tax return filings. So, and we continue doing that. So, I really appreciate being here. Thank you.
We're going to have time to explain who you are in detail, but if you could just now just tell us your names a little bit so we get used to your voices, that's what we had in mind because we have so many questions to ask. So, just if you would tell us your name and tiny bit about yourself.
I'm Jake Ericache, and I'm the former policeman in the group. And one of the things that Michelle didn't ask is, an important one, is how many of you guys want to be policemen out there? There you go. We'll talk afterwards. I've lived in Culver City for 23 years. I'm born and raised in Santa Monica. Went to Santa Monica High School, graduated in 1988, went on to Kansas State University, and became a police officer in '93, and now I work corporate security for America Honda Motors in Torrance. Thanks.
Mr. Lee?
Okay, before I speak, I just want to clarify, are these the opening statements, or should we just say our name?
Well, if you just make a very brief opening statement, we didn't really program that, but just very brief opening statement, and Ava's going to, she's a timer. Ava and Alma are our timers, sitting in the front row, and they'll hold up a sign when it's time to pass the mic on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because-
About 15 seconds.
Because we were told one minute, and I think that's what we prepared for.
We were all prepared for that.
Let's try 15 seconds.
We can manage somehow.
Okay, my name is Daniel Lee. I'm older than I look, I'm actually 36. A lot of people think I'm 22. I've lived in Culver City for 13 years. I was a six-year veteran of the Air National Guard. I was in the Screen Actors Guild for 11 years. I've lived in the Los Angeles area for 19 years. I am originally from Alabama, but I started petition to ban offshore drilling in Florida when I was in seventh grade. Passed.
And you can really talk fast, too.
I don't think I could top that. Hi, my name is Megan Sally Wells. There's one major thing that distinguishes me here among the candidates. I am the only incumbent. I am the only person who has, who is actually on the council right now. I've served for the past four years. I've done a lot for the schools. My time is up, and I hope we have time to talk more.
I'm Thomas Small. I moved here with my wife so that we could have kids and go to the great schools that we have here. Thanks.
I'm dancing in the back.
My name is Marcus Tigs. I've lived in Culver City a long time with my family. I'm a bankruptcy lawyer, helping debtors and creditors. I'm retired lieutenant colonel of the US Army, deployed overseas, and I'm very happy and excited to be here. Thank you.
I'm Scott Wyatt. Thank you for having us here this evening. I moved here 27 years ago with my wife and my infant daughter. I had my first internet startup in 1993, before the internet even had pictures, if you can imagine such a thing. And I'm very proud to say that my daughter is now the Associate Finance Director for the United States Senator from Wisconsin. I couldn't be prouder. Maybe some of you guys will do that someday, too. Thank you.
All right. And so, now we have a 30-second round, and I'm going to let Michelle do that.
Okay, I'm going to throw it over to the moderators. But so, this first question, I just want to make sure Hadley was here. And this is a 15-second round. It's a lightning round. He's going to ask all the candidates, starting from Mr. Erikson down. And the question is, okay, the question is, you ask the question.
What would you change about Culver City?
What would you change about Culver City? I thought you said it started with Mr. Erikson, is it start with me?
Well, I like a lot here, but there is a few things I would like to change with Culver City. One thing is traffic and parking issues. So, that's one thing I think we really need to get, get a handle on.
I'm going to piggyback on Mr. Erikson's answer with that. Traffic and parking is really a big issue, and as you kids know, walking to and from school and bicycling around town, it's a real problem. So, I would work to change that.
I would also make Culver City more walkable and bikeable, and I'd also try to make the city more sustainable. I feel like the school district and students in particular are far ahead of the city council when it comes to sustainability, and I think there's a lot that we can learn from you.
So, Culver City has 10% of the largest urban oil field in the United States. I would like to see this as the largest park on the western side of the United States.
I would like to see the schools work more closely with the city government and city council, and have all of our communities work more closely with each other here in Culver City.
I would like for the city to find money to improve the parks, improve the equipment because you folks, there are a lot more of you that are coming to our city and are living in our city, and we need to find the money.
And I would like to find a way to build more and smaller houses so people can live together in Culver City without having to go elsewhere to work and have their work and their life be under the same roof. I think we can do that.
So, now for the first question, and this is to all the candidates, so you have a 30-minute timer. 30 seconds, sorry. 30-second time interval. To answer the question, the first question is, if Planned Parenthood wanted to open a clinic in Culver City, would you approve or oppose them?
Were you starting with me?
We're starting with Ms., Mr. Jay. Okay, Mr. Jay?
With me?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they said there was going to be tough questions, and that was a great one to start off with. I don't really take a firm stance either way. It's more of a national issue. I think on a city level, we should listen to the community and see what our residents want and how they would react to it.
Okay, I would definitely be in favor of a Planned Parenthood clinic in Culver City, mostly because most of the services that Planned Parenthood provides are health care, both for women, and it's understated how much health care they provide for men. Also, they provide services that prevent unwanted pregnancies and other things that a lot of young people benefit from, but also a lot of older people. So, I would definitely be in favor.
I'd be very proud and happy to have a Planned Parenthood in Culver City for the reasons just stated. It's interesting because before I was 18, some of my first activism experiences were demonstrating in favor of the right to choose. And I started, you know, before I could even vote, I was registering people to vote so that those who were 18 and older could help make sure that women continue to have the right to choose over their own bodies.
I would be totally in favor of having a Planned Parenthood clinic here in Culver City. I think it would make us even more of a model city than we are now and a symbol for the rest of the country. I think it would support our health care and related services, and I would be very proud to have Planned Parenthood here in Culver City.
I would be proud to have Planned Parenthood in Culver City as well, providing access to medical services to individuals that might not have readily ready access. And I think it would add an extra layer of health services to the community.
I'm proud to have been a Planned Parenthood supporter financially and politically for almost 50 years. When I was young, Planned Parenthood was the only place that young women could go to get advice. Everything else was locked up to them. And it was clear to me then, and it's clear to me now, that Planned Parenthood is a great, honorable organization. It would be terrific to have a Planned Parenthood clinic in Culver City.
And I would say absolutely. And it's really important, and I've been a supporter of the Sandy Seidel Health Center at the school for a couple of years. I think it's really important that we upgrade our services to our youth.
All right, now for our first question from the audience. Orhan Huevelin, please come up, and I'm so sorry if I mispronounce your name.
Okay. So, my question is, what has, I'm sorry, what has happened with the drinking water contamination in Flint is really scary and could happen anywhere? The Environmental Protection Agency has recently confirmed that fracking can pollute drinking water. What will you do to protect Culver City from the effects of fracking with the huge oil field right next door to us?
That's for Daniel Lee.
Very quickly, I think one of the things that we need to talk about in the context of the Inglewood Oil Field and the natural gas storage facility that's on the western side of the city, close to Playa Vista, is banning fracking outright. And I think before we actually transform the Inglewood Oil Field into a park, there needs to be a lot of mitigation. But in general, I think we should work towards a ban on fracking because of the recent Cal EPA report that it does contaminate water. And as a, you know, as a Culver City Council person, I would work with regional partners to try to get an outright ban rather than focus on offsets and mitigation and these things that continually make people in our city and our neighbors sick.
And then, continuing on to Megan.
Okay. So, I'm on the oil drilling subcommittee, so I've been working on this for the past four years. And before that, I was involved in environmental work as well. So, there are two things. We are working on regulations. We asked the governor to ban fracking, and we've supported statewide legislation to ban fracking. If, in the next few months, we're going to come forward with some strong regulations that I hope will be well-supported throughout the community and that giving the community a lot of input into these regulations as well. So, this has been a really hard and long battle. The other thing is to create a city that is less dependent on fossil fuels so that we can model that by using alternative transportation and alternative fuel sources.
All right, so this next question is for Thomas, and the person asking it is Asaya Sayed, and I'm, again, super sorry if I mispronounce.
Asia?
Asia.
My question is, many cities now require their police officers to use body cameras. This protects the police from being wrongfully accused and protects the public from being profiled, harassed, or worse. What will you do to require our police force to take this necessary step?
This question is for me. I certainly would want to work with the police department to give them the very best equipment possible, and I would totally support body cameras, assuming that the police department wants them. So, I would do, you know, I think that we should allocate exactly the funding that the police department requires and needs to have the very best equipment that there is and exactly what will help them do the job, do their jobs in the best way possible.
And the next question is from Abraham Vazquez. Oh, for Marcus.
Abraham, you here?
So, well, I'm sorry, well, they're coming up. I'm just trying to understand the format. All right, is it two people answer each question, or is it just one person, one question? Just so we know going forward.
It's one question per person, and then whichever question you want to answer, you answer, that will be the round two question that you guys, you pick the question that you heard in round one that you really want to answer, and that'll be your question for round two. Does that make sense?
Is that right away, and you just, you just pick it, like, if somebody wants to follow up on something, you just pick it right away? Or is it something that, does round two happen later, or does round two happen now?
So, round one is once everybody on stage gets to answer their question. So, round two, it's your choice.
Oh, okay.
You answer whatever question, and then we'll-
Because I thought you were calling on me, but anyway, sorry.
We can repeat the question.
And to reconfirm, these are 45-second answers?
Yes.
There was another school shooting this week in Ohio. How can city council, CCPD, and CCOSD work together to make our schools safe from gun violence?
We, all of the agencies, all the parties have to work together. That is the key. And the students, you students as well, I mean, if you see something happening or that might happen, you definitely need to let teachers know, and the teachers would move it up the chain. That's very important because we are a community, and that's how we protect each other.
The next question is for Ava Deverlini. Sorry if I butchered that. And it's for Scott, sorry.
We recently learned of the methane leak in Porter Ranch. We border Playa Vista, which was built on a methane-rich marshland. How can we be certain we are not in danger? What measures are in place, and can they fail us?
Well, in fact, we are in danger. There is a methane natural gas storage facility that was built under the Biona wetlands many years ago when nobody lived around here. And now, a lot of people do live around here. And it's relatively new knowledge to the public. And as a civic leader, my primary responsibility, our primary responsibility, is the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And as such, I will do everything to fight to make sure that that field is examined, which has never happened yet to the best of my knowledge, so that we know how many wells are there, where they are, and what kind of protection is in place. Because we don't know at this point, and that's the first thing we need to do, is find out what's there. I saw a flare, an actual gas flare there in 2008 as I was driving back from the beach. I had no idea what it was. That's what- That's what it was. So, we need to find out exactly what's there and find out what we can do to fix it.
Okay, and now we're going to start our lightning round. Our first question is, and this is for all the candidates, so you'll have 15 seconds to complete the question, and this is for all the candidates again. If you could nominate a Supreme Court justice, who would it be? And this is for Mr. Erickson first.
Well, that's a question I haven't really thought about. I think the president is doing a good job right now of vetting and putting up suggestions. I would trust his judgment.
Oh, man, you guys are just a riot.
Hope you paid to do.
That's a tough one. I think that the government has a way of working its, working a way towards the best election, and it's what's in place, and it's worked for years, and so I support it.
I would nominate Michelle Alexander, author of The New Jim Crow, and social justice advocate.
I know she just said that she wouldn't do it, but I would definitely vote for Kamala Harris. And I would insist, if I had the power, that the Republicans actually let a nominee pass and not block it, they're being completely anti-constitutional with their stance right now.
I would have to wait a little while, but I would nominate Barack Obama.
As only lawyer, I would nominate Judge Neil Basin, a bankruptcy judge. His judicial temperament is fantastic. It's always a pleasure to appear before him, and his decisions that he makes are very well-tempered, and they make a lot of sense.
Well, I just heard about this guy the other day on the radio, and I'm not going to be able to remember his name. He's a Latino who was voted 83 to nothing to the Supreme Court of California, graduated. He's an actual immigrant who was naturalized, went to Yale, and then to Harvard Law School. But since I can't remember his name, I'll say Elizabeth Warren instead. I think she'd be terrific.
All right, now going back to our normal round. This is from Ivan Delgado, going to Mr. Erickson.
Culver City land values continue to go up. This is great. However, the downside is that long-term residents of Culver City are being displaced because of rising rents. What will Culver City Council do to help families whose children and grandparents go to our schools who have deep roots in the community and from being victims of gentrification? Would you support rent control, for example?
Well, we got the same question the other day, and there is a consensus across the nation that rent control doesn't work. So, I don't think we should explore that at all, because it doesn't solve the problem. What we need to do is we need to build more, and we need to build affordable units, and that solves problems. It's even, there is actually, the state budget office came out with a report just a couple of weeks ago, last week actually, that showed that even, building even expensive units helps, because then people move into the expensive units, and their units gets available for someone moving up, and suddenly, there is the lower-cost units available, and that is a more effective way than actually doing rent control. And this is all studies from all economists in the US shores this.
The next question is coming from Mia Windvin, and it's for Mr. Gorn. Mr. J.
We have one community garden in Culver City and a waiting list of people who want to use it. What will you do to increase the number of gardening plots and the community's access to these plots?
Well, I think we need to take a look at what land's available and the city take action for how that land's used and get more involved in it.
So, this next question is for Daniel Lee from...
So, now is the round two round, and this is when, Mr. Lee, you can answer whatever question you heard prior and address it, and everybody, you know, that's, it's basically your choice now.
And how many seconds is it?
You have 45 seconds for that.
Could I do like 15 seconds a question?
I don't know. No, I think we need to stick to one question.
Okay, okay, just asking.
I have a list if you want it here.
I think I'd like to respond to the question about body cameras. I think they are necessary for police officers, especially in the context of what's been happening across the country, but I don't think they are the solution, because in many instances where there is a controversy, body cameras are turned off, or the footage is mysteriously not available. So, we need both body cameras and a combination of citizen oversight committees to make sure that police are doing their jobs effectively and that both police and citizens are protected. But body cameras alone will not do it. They're just a technology. What we need to do is change the culture of police and policing, so citizens of the community are not seen as the enemy.
That was the question I wanted to answer, too, and it's to say that at the Ask to Know Forum that I participated in in 2012, there was a racial justice question that was asked, and I said, "We need a dash cam in each police vehicle," and now, four years later, we have them. So, I think that's, you know, A, progress, and it's good progress, and B, the police department wants body cams, and so, and the city council has released funding for them to purchase them, and so this will be happening very soon as well. But importantly, and to address some of Mr. Lee's points, community outreach is really central, and also, when I was mayor, I accepted the My Brothers Keeper Challenge, and our police department is fully on board with My Brothers Keeper.
I'd like to address the fracking in the oil fields question. I think that we need to move beyond that, the old energy model, and try to form a coalition to, with the surrounding areas and with the oil fields that are mostly not in Culver City, to try to create a microgrid there, to use solar and wind power to replace the oil wells there, to eliminate fracking, and to create a situation where we have energy independence for Culver City and for the surrounding areas. I think once we have that in place in the areas that are, that may have some environmental damage and wouldn't be good for parks, then we need to take the rest of it and make it into the largest park on the west, in the western United States, as Megan described it.
I'll touch on rent control. I am against rent control. However, what I do believe our city is lacking is tenant rights. We have a landlord mediation board that essentially has no teeth, to the extent we have qualified mediators who can do things other than dealing with the controversy with rent. What I mean by that is there's a lot of other issues that renters run into with landlords, and that could be repairs to the unit, that could be nuisance, it could be various things. So, I think the first step would be to give the landlord mediation board quite a bit more teeth, and then we can move from there as to other renter rights.
I'll talk about fracking very briefly. Unfortunately, the oil fields that we're talking about here are almost entirely in the county of Los Angeles, not in Culver City, and the county of Los Angeles has made its decision about what it wants to do with those fields. We don't like it, but that's what it is. We do, however, have control over a small part of that field. And as I mentioned earlier, the health, safety, and welfare of you guys is my biggest, that's my job. If I'm elected to the city council, that is my job, is your health, safety, and welfare. And there are things that we can do to make it as safe as possible. It's an inherently dirty and unsafe business. But what we can do is push it as far as possible away from Culver City and make sure that there's a big buffer zone around everything. And as has been mentioned up here before, it makes it a lot better case for us if we can wean ourselves away from cars, go to public transportation, away from individual cars. We have a better case to make for ending fracking and ending oil drilling. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to another lightning... Oh, so sorry.
Well, I think the, sort of, combined question here is, but the methane leak in Porter Ranch, I think, is a good illustration of an issue that we need to seriously look at. The gas storage that we have under the marshes at Playa is built about a little over 60 years ago. Porter Ranch was built a little over 40 years ago. So, that field is actually created even earlier and have a lot of the same well castings. It has the same technique and some older technique, and I think that's something that we really need to focus on, because the westerly wind will blow that plume into our city. And this is actually a crucial issue that the city council should start looking into.
So, I'm going to comment on the young man's question about the recent school shooting and talk a little bit about that. Being that law enforcement's my background, one of the things that works best with the community is, I lost my train of thought, is communication. And the students, along with the school, along with the police department, all have to work together, and I believe that you guys are the best eyes and ears. But you need an outlet. You need to know where to turn in case something comes up and how to report it. And I think that we need to take a look at what other agencies are doing around the nation, what other schools are doing as far as making it accessible for kids to step forward and report something that's not right.
Okay, this time for real, we're moving on to our lightning round, and the question is for everybody. Where do you get your news, and can you see Russia from your house?
Yeah.
Can't see what? Can't see what? Russia from our house? Where do we start?
Let's start with Megan.
Well, I listen to NPR, and I read the LA Times, and I read the New Yorker magazine. I'm always listening to NPR, and I love it when they say NPR in Culver City, and it's like right down the street from me. I can see Russia in Google Earth.
Good answer.
I like to listen to a radio show called Marketplace. I read the New York Times every day on the internet and on weekends on paper, and I see Russia in my mind because I traveled there a number of years ago.
I get the news primarily from various outlets on the internet. Periodically, I will pick up LA Times newspaper and go through it when I'm on the expo. As far as seeing Russia, no, I do not see it from my backyard.
Mostly here. I also subscribe to the New York Times and the Los Angeles Times and the New Yorker and listen to NPR. But mostly, I get my news from Google News, because it randomly picks different news outlets around the world, so I don't just get one particular version of what's going on. I get everybody's version. I find that very helpful for my thought processes.
On the news, I have the NPR app on my phone. I usually get a lot of news there, and I look at what's going on. I also listen to radio when I'm driving, flipping through different stations. If my wife has been there, it's Kiss FM, and so I get their news also when they stop playing music. But I read a lot of international papers. Being Swedish, I read Swedish papers. I read the British Guardian, and I read the German Die Welt, because it gives me a really instinct perspective on what goes on in the US compared to how it's reported here in the US and in the world.
Well, we have Ari Noonan sitting in the front row, and I log on to his website every day for our local news, what's happening in Culver City. As far as national news, I manage the Communication Center for America Honda Motors. We oversee 52 sites, so we constantly have the news on to make sure that we're in tune with everything that's going on across the nation.
And I should say very quickly, when I want to get local news, I usually actually just watch KCAL 9 or KTLA. But for international news, I actually rely on social media, and it's more of a mix of what friends and organizations post. So, it's, you know, the BBC, the Guardian, you know, the Griot, Slate Salon, LA Times, Alternet, Culver City News, Telesur. It's a mix.
We have Mira here, who's, what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade. And this will be a 15-second lightning round for you guys as well, starting with Mr. Small.
Double lightning.
Do you think more schools should be built in Culver City so people have more choices?
Thank you, Mira. I think that we need to take the schools that we have and upgrade them so that they're all even more excellent. The facilities, the facilities are good now, but they, we all know that they need some work, and that's what we need to do.
Mira, where'd you go? Okay. I think we could look at building more schools, but we do, we do need to focus on the physical plants that we have right now and improve them and enhance them for a growing student population. So, you have all of the tools necessary to excel in the future.
Yes, most of the schools in Culver City are nearly as old as I am, so we can start, we can start spending our money rather than building more schools to systematically and periodically upgrade them so that they are 21st century schools like you guys all deserve.
Well, I think that the first thing we need to do is to see that the bond measure that we passed actually get applied to the best possible way with updating our schools and building new facilities. I'm currently the vice chairman of the Bond Oversight Committee, so I'm constantly looking out for and see that the bond money is spent the way they should be spent.
Mira, I think the lack of land on the west side is going to inhibit building new schools, so we need to take a look in how to reinvest and make our schools even better.
I think in terms of schools, what we need to focus on is establishing more equity between schools, particularly when it comes to elementary schools. I think we have a lot when it comes to middle and high schools, but I think there, I think there's some imbalances when it comes to funding and to facilities for elementary schools.
So, I'm a big public school advocate. I've always gone to public schools and so have my kids, so I'm, I think we have excellent schools, and we want to build upon what we have. This being said, I would like us to have universal preschool in Culver City, so if there would be an expansion in that regard, that's what I'd be looking for.
Okay, and we have our next question from Daniela Hernani, and this is for Smalls, and this is your 45-second question.
The drought in southern California has continued even through this year, this El Niño year. Culver City is a green and pleasant community because of our many trees. What plans do you have to preserve this aspect of our quality of life in Culver City?
Our trees are fantastic, and we need, we need to, there's, we have an urban forestry plan in place, and we need to support that and make sure that the trees, that when we take down trees that are ruining the sidewalks, that we put in trees that are the most appropriate and that are as large as possible to preserve our canopy. The, we need to do, we need to use water conservation methods of every single kind. You start conserving water, the minute that it, the second that it hits... You start conserving water, the minute that it, the second that it hits the roof or hits the sidewalk, it needs to flow into the ground and as little as possible out to the ocean and be saved and cleaned on the spot. So we need to continue every aspect of water conservation.
I'm going to be Kai right now. Kai took a little break. So this is for Mr. Tigs. And the person asking is Peter Tran.
Marijuana dispensaries could bring in tremendous revenues to our city. Would you consider allowing medical marijuana dispensaries to serve Culver City?
Mr. Tran, that's a good question. Look, the way I look at it is, yeah, it'll definitely probably bring money into the community. I would be concerned about the neighbors. I don't believe the neighbors would want a dispensary down the street. So basically, I'm saying I have issues with dispensaries in Culver City. Sorry.
So this next question is from China Davis, and this is for Mr. White. The increased air traffic and lower flight paths over Culver City causes noise and increased air pollution. What will you do to get relief for our city that hasn't already been tried?
Well, the first thing we have to do is get the FAA to stop telling us that we're imagining it. I know you guys aren't imagining it when you sit in class every day and the planes fly over your schools. We found out recently that it's actually illegal to build a school under a flight path. Evidently, it's not illegal to put a flight path over a school. The city is already prepared. I've spoken to the city attorney about this. I think all of my colleagues have pretty much the same attitude about this as well. The city is prepared. When our window of opportunity arrives, that we are prepared to challenge the FAA's environmental assessment that they are operating on now that says, that is telling us that we're imagining the planes that are flying over our heads. We know better. Phoenix just recently had a success in this venue. We're a little ways behind Phoenix, but when our time comes, we will be. And if I'm on the city council, we will definitely be ready to pursue legal action to stop this. Thank you.
Okay, and this next question is for Mr. Goran.
More bike riding seems to be in our future. So does more car traffic going through Culver City. There will be more accidents as a result of these two trends unless we take action now to prevent them. In order to make bike riding safer in Culver City, will you make more bike lanes and require that cyclists obey the vehicle code? For example, stopping at stoplights and stop signs.
I definitely think we have a lot to do with regards to our bike lanes and our way to bike around the city. There is a couple of improvements we could do fairly quickly, I think. I know there is a project along El Llana to build dedicated bike lanes that will connect the Culver City Bike Lane and Bayona Creek Bike Lane. And it will connect the school. It will allow for a very safe transportation on bikes. And there is a lot of other areas where we should explore and look at where we can put in dedicated bike lane. I think we should prefer to have dedicated bike lane before we start painting bikes on our streets. It's safer. Bicycleists can be right, but will die anyway when they fight a car. So I think we need to focus on the dedicated bike lanes.
Okay, this next question is for Mr. Jay from Janai Johnson.
The state of California and the city of LA have moved forward on the issue of the minimum wage. Even with these increases, which take effect in the future, the minimum wage is far from a living wage. What will you do and what can the city council do to improve the lives of those who do these jobs in Culver City, which is also a lot of students?
Right, so I'm against the minimum wage raise as a city taking on that job of raising it. I think we should do what the state has. When the state votes on it, then we'll accept it. My family owned a bakery for 100 years. We hired kids right out of high school, from Santa Monica High. Everybody started at minimum wage. And what it does, it helps you grow as kids and better yourself. So the minimum wage isn't the answer to people living, you know, their day-to-day lives. The minimum wage was designed for the entry-level worker. So, thank you.
And just a reminder for all the candidates, so that there's no concerns. When the students stand, they're just voicing their agreement with the question. This next question is from Josh Zucker, and it is for Mr. Lee.
If the Chamber of Commerce and business owners of Culver City claim that they cannot afford to increase the minimum wage, how will you oppose them while ensuring that small, family-owned businesses survive?
Well, I think, and if you had asked me the previous question, you would have heard me say that I am a staunch advocate of raising the minimum wage. If it was adjusted for inflation, you know, the minimum wage in 1982 would be something like $22 or $26 an hour for now. So the fact that, you know, other municipalities are moving slowly or haven't changed doesn't mean that we should not. We are an affluent community. And even our small business owners and our large business owners can adjust if, you know, we phase it in within the right timeline and the right way. I think it actually puts our business owners at a competitive disadvantage to not have a higher minimum wage because a lot of employees or potential employees will just work across the street in Los Angeles where they will get paid more.
Okay, this next question is from Tia Tigs, going from Ms., or going to Ms. Ali.
Businesses in Culver City try to hire adults who already have job experience. This means that they are hiring people who do not even live in Culver City. What will you do to help the young people who live here and who need jobs?
Thank you for asking this question. I'm, our human resources director, Serena Wright, came up to me and the city council school board liaison committee with this wonderful new program, which is a personal, like a passion project of hers that we're supporting 100%. And that is to do summer jobs and internships with Culver City youth. This is going to be an incredible opportunity. She's working with Adrian Madrid right now at the high school. But we really want to build these opportunity pathways. And believe it or not, not a lot of people actually want government jobs. And so for us as a city, it's also for us a way to show new generations, you know, that there are some amazing jobs within public service that we hope you will be attracted to in the future, too.
Okay, so we're going to have another lightning round. So again, this will be open to all candidates for 15 seconds. And we're going to start with Mr. Erickson. So here's your question. If you could bring Culver City a free concert from any famous musician, who would it be?
ABBA. Because, you know, if we got them together, that would be fantastic.
Oh, you guys are too, you guys are too young. I'd go with the Rolling Stones because that's what I grew up with.
I hope you guys don't think I'm pandering, but I would have to say Beyoncé.
I'm in love with jazz. And so this is total fantasy. And I would love to see Ella Fitzgerald back alive and with us and singing here.
This is a hard question for me because I would have so many answers to this of so much fantastic music that we could bring here. But I would put in a personal plug for a world-renowned classical, new classical music group based in Santa Monica called Jacaranda Music.
I would say Metallica. And the significance is Robert Troho, the bassist, graduated from Culver High.
That's interesting.
Anybody I want, right?
Yeah, anybody.
Well, the one that transcends most generational lines that I know about is The Beatles. We can't get them, but I'd love to have them.
Okay, our next question is asked by Camilla Terrell, and it's for Thomas Small.
We have plenty of fine dining, bars, and art galleries in Culver City. What we lack are places for young people and families to go that are fun, affordable, and safe. We need a bowling alley, a roller rink, affordable movie theaters, inexpensive, healthy fast food. What will you do to encourage and subsidize these types of businesses so that we are not just a city where people enjoy coming for dinner, but a city for the people who live here as well?
I think there's two fantastic things that come to mind immediately. We have talked about bringing back the ice rink, you know, in the area, you know, over by Sepulveda that a couple of years ago we were talking about as the entertainment hospitality district. You know, it's an enclosed facility. So it would be great to have by the freeway. You could have, it could be near the freeway where the air is not so great. And yet you could still have clean air and great recreation inside. The other thing that immediately comes to mind is there's a fantastic new restaurant called Local that is the first sustainable, healthy, organic, fast-food restaurant probably in the world. And there's one that's in South Central with a local chef. And I would like to bring the local restaurant here to Culver City.
Okay, so for round four, it's going to be like the previous round where we're going to start with Tigs. But you can choose any of the previous questions that were asked and answer them as you wish.
Actually, I'll go with the question that was asked to Mr. Small because that's the only one that I remember right now. The ice rink, I was a competitive figure skater a long, long time ago. So Culver Ice, that was my home ice. I was, when they had All Year Figure Skating Club. So what we are definitely lacking, things for young people to do. And we all talk about that the essence or the quality of life, it's great. And it is. But we can't lose sight of, there are not a lot of things for young people to do. And we have to fix that. That needs to be in the radar and a target. Thank you.
Well, I was going to do that, but I'll do drought instead. The drought and water conservation is one of the things that, what I keep finding out about Culver City is that we are doing lots of things, but we're not talking about it enough. We're not telling everybody about probably a lot of things that you don't even know that we're doing to conserve water, to preserve the watershed. For example, you know where the Costco is right now? Costco came to the planning commission and wanted to do some new building. And we allowed them to do it. But in return, they had to build a huge storage area underneath the Costco where wastewater would run in. And it percolates down through the sand like it does in nature. And when it runs out the other end into Marina Del Rey, it's clean. That's something the government wanted us to have to do. And we did it, and it's done now. And nobody knows about that kind of thing. And we have a number of initiatives to save water for drought-tolerant plants and stuff that, I could go on, but I won't because I've been told to stop. But anyway, we do a lot of great stuff around here, and I'd love to tell you more about it afterwards.
So just a point of clarification. You said wastewater, but it's stormwater and urban water runoff.
Go call it gray. Not wastewater.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Well, I would like to talk about our issue with overflights and airplanes. I think that we need to be very strategic here when we're going to go after the federal authority, FAA. And that is that if we want to push the flight path somewhere, we're going to push it probably to LA. And do you think they're going to sit quiet? And do we want to have a fight with LA? There is one way that I've been proposing that actually we'll join and we could create a coalition with all cities around the country to fight this. And that is talking about altitude. Because it's the altitude that creates our problem. The lower the planes are, the more noise it is. The higher up they are, the less they are affecting us and the less pollution gets to us also because it's dispersed by the wind. In Europe, they changed the approach to three degrees instead of two, shortening the area which actually has noise impact. We could do the same and we could join a coalition with all cities and force FAA to do that.
So I'm going to answer Peter's question about the marijuana dispensaries. And it's an important question, Peter, that you bring up because you're right, it would bring a lot of money as far as tax into the city. The problem with it is safety and lack of education. And right now, technically, it's against the law because the state of California needs to vote on it and the federal government needs to back it. But one of the things that stems from marijuana dispensaries are armed robberies, takeover robberies, homicides, and a lot of violent crime. So saying, hey, let's open a marijuana dispensary, there's a lot more to it than just selling weed out of the front door of a business.
Okay, I was actually going to tackle minimum wage, but I'm going to tackle marijuana as well. I recently got my MSW from UCLA. And in the process, one of my professors actually did a study on whether or not crime actually increases around medical marijuana dispensaries. And they focused on Sacramento and Los Angeles. And what they found out was that that is not true, according to empirical data. And I actually live on College Avenue, right off Venice, in between Venice and Washington. And there's been a medical marijuana dispensary, actually a few there for quite some time. And there was actually one also near Venice and National. What is legal right now is medical marijuana. We don't need the state. What's not legal is recreational marijuana. And that's a completely different subject and a completely different conversation. So we don't need to conflate the two.
So I've got to talk about biking because biking is my primary mode of transportation. And when I lived in Paris, I was nine years car-free living in Paris. So I know the barriers that are out there. I also was the co-founder of the Culver City Bicycle Coalition. So in terms of advocacy and moving this forward has been really important to me all these years. But I was also really involved in Safe Routes to School. So we're talking about, you know, riding safely. First, you need to learn how to ride. And then it's up to the city to create the proper infrastructure. Safe Routes to School started in my son's elementary, Lynnwood Howe, as a volunteer program. It now has over $3.5 million in grant funding. And it's in every single school in our entire district. I'm incredibly proud. But we need to do more, especially around the metro.
Well, I thought Megan just stole my question. But actually, I can follow right up on what she said perfectly. She's done a fantastic job at starting, moving forward with bike lanes and with making the city bikable. And we need to support it even further. The city council just appointed a new version of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee that Megan served on even before she was on the city council. And we need to give them real teeth and real authority and really listen to them. Because as it is now, there is a Bike Master Plan. And they are building the streetscape to match that Bike Master Plan, but it's not nearly as far as it should be. We need protected bike lanes that where you can't get run over by the cars, where kids can go with their parents. And we need to move forward with that in a serious way.
All right, moving on to another lightning round, starting with Scott. Which two candidates would you endorse?
Well, me. Does that count as one?
Good choice, good choice.
Okay, I can do me as a choice. And, boy, you know what? I must say, we've had this discussion in front of other people, there is not one person on this panel that I think would make a bad city council person. Everybody here, they have, sometimes we disagree, we have things we think one way about and the other, but every person here has the best interests of Culver City at their heart, and I think that they do a good job. Even if I disagree with them, we can work that out. Thank you.
I'm going to say ditto to what Scott said, but, 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 I worked, wait, wait, wait. I worked with Scott on the planning commission for a period of time, and Scott is a good guy, but it's great being up here with everyone, and any one of these would make a fine council member.
I think all of us have to echo that, and it's really, it's really an honor to be up here with these six fantastic candidates. But I have to tip my hat to the experience and the accomplishment of Megan Sally Wells. She has done a fantastic job for us, and she will continue to do so.
Thank you for answering the question, Mr. Small.
It's a hot potato because we all have to work with each other, right? So I think we have a true opportunity here. I'm only the fifth woman elected to the city council of Culver City in our 99-year history. That is, you know, almost criminal, but it's not as criminal as the fact that we've never had an African-American, an Asian-American, or an openly gay person on our city council. And this year, we have more choice, and I'm very excited about that.
You weren't supposed to tell them I was gay.
All right, guys, let's try to actually choose to. I know you guys are all amazing, but...
Can I choose myself twice?
Sadly, no, but...
No, no, seriously, I'll answer the question.
Let's try to not choose just yourself.
I think the people who most align with my thinking politically are Megan Sally Wells and Thomas Small.
You know, it is a tough question, and we all bring our own qualities. But I come from a conservative background. My parents were conservative, I was born and raised conservative. And I think that the two individuals that fit that mold are Mr. Erickson and Mr. Tigs.
Well, we've been asked this question a number of times, and every time, I look at the same way, is that when I'm going to be on the city council, I don't really want to have irritated any of these colleagues. I think they are fantastic. And just a week ago, we were called the Magnificent Seven, so I defer on this, and, you know, I don't have a problem working with any of these six other candidates that's going to come with me.
Okay, so now we're returning to our regular round. So this is for Mr. Wyant, and this is your 45-second question. And this is coming from Richard Yoshida.
We have music in downtown Culver City in the summers, but downtown is already crowded, and it is quite expensive. We are the heart of Screamland, and we have many great parks. We need fun activities for people who live here. What can you do to create community-oriented activities such as movies in the park and concerts in the park, tapping into the talent of the people who live here, as well as bringing in fun, live, family entertainment?
Wow. Okay, then. This better be good, hadn't it? Thank you for that question. My daughter, who's 27 now, had this question when she lived here, and it is not a lot better. I can tell you that the parcel B, when it's finished, will have a big stage that is specifically intended for public parks, for, I mean, for public performances. I can also say that one of the things that we have all through the city is narrow commercial corridors where we could have, there could easily be pop-up, all up and down Washington Boulevard. There's room for us to build buildings that people can live above, and we can have pop-ups below, pop-up restaurants, pop-up theaters, pop-up, like cafes. All those things are quite easily done if we just have to, you know, it sounds kind of wonky, but we have to change some of our planning decisions. But I can, but for sure, we will have a public space in parcel B. We can make better use of the courtyard, although that's not a really terrific place for music. But parcel B is coming, and also the huge park around the Transorient District, all those designs out there. When that's finished, it will also be a big, open place for concerts. And you can all get there easily enough because it's right next to the train station, it'll be right on the bike path. Does that answer your question? Is that helpful? Oh, good. Well, we can do that. We can do all those things.
Okay, and the next question is for Mr. Erickson. This is your 45-second question, and it's coming from Cameron Koska.
Many people in Culver City play Batman in basketball or ping pong. Basketball can be played on an asphalt court, but doing so harms joints because of jumping on a hard surface. Batminton and ping pong often cannot be played outside because of the wind. An indoor public gym, or better yet, several indoor public courts would provide safe, expensive, and healthy activities for young people who live here. What will you do for Culver City to build indoor public courts?
Unfortunately, we can't say that the city doesn't really have money to do this. We had a redevelopment agency once, and the governor dissolved that, so we don't have a lot of money in our coffre, which means we need to create private-public partnership. We need to create partnership with the school districts, for instance, because the school district has similar interests, and the city and the school district could work together on creating some of these facilities. The city has land, the school has currently bond money, and in some aspect, might not be able to be used, but in some others. So this is really something where we also need to look at what the private sector can help us with, because there might be some entertainment companies or other sports companies who are willing to put up a facility if we have the land. So it's really a community effort to find those possibilities.
Thank you.
And this is for Mr. Jay now, and this is coming from Ms. Sarah Wells.
The traffic on the street in front of the senior parking lot continues to be a dangerous and annoying problem. Parents stop wherever they feel like it to drop off their kids. Seniors are trying to get into the lot to park so they won't be locked out and late for class. This is a traffic problem that only the city can deal with because it is on the city street. What will you do to make the police department enforce traffic and parking laws so that we can get to school safe and on time?
Finally, I get a question. So I had the same problem going to Santa Monica High School in the 80s. And one of the things that you guys have to understand is, when I first came on the police department in 93, we had 130 police officers. We're down to right around 100 police officers. So what we need to do is work with the police chief, work with the traffic bureau, let them know your guys' concerns, and what we can do is we can do targeted enforcement. And what targeted enforcement is, is have a number of officers target that certain area, enforce the traffic laws that are in the area. Double parking, gridlock, and things of that nature. Once you go out and you start writing tickets, people learn really quick not to break those laws.
Thank you.
This question is now for Mr. Lee, and it is coming from Milo.
The concentrated housing development in Playa Vista along Jefferson Boulevard will continue to increase traffic through Culver City, creating more traffic jams, accidents, and ground-level pollution, destroying the peaceful quality of life in our city. What will you do to redirect traffic and alleviate this problem?
That's a very hard question, and it's something I think that will have to be done collaboratively with Playa Vista. But one of the things that I've spoken about a little tonight is trying to make our city more bikable and walkable, and to try to discourage traffic use. I think one of the ways, car use, I'm sorry. And I think one of the ways that we can do that is trying to not necessarily increase the throughput of the streets that people use in Culver City, to basically get from someplace outside of Culver City to another place outside of Culver City. But to make strict regulations so that we don't necessarily increase speed, and it might become, you know, an unfavorable option for them to take these streets. We need to focus more on safety and less on throughput, in my opinion.
Okay, this next question is for Ms. Sally Wells and is from Brianna Newsom.
Left-turn signals have saved lives. As our traffic problems increase in the city, will you undertake a complete reassessment of traffic lights, including those that will prevent accidents and help improve traffic flow?
So the city is looking at a lot of the traffic lights, but I have to echo with what Mr. Lee just said. What I'd like Culver City to adopt is something called Vision Zero, which means that zero traffic fatality should be acceptable to any society. And many cities have already adopted this. And at the end of the day, it's very simple: speed kills. So if we are bringing down the speed of our cars, then we are stopping the fatalities. Again, also, the idea of throughput and getting cars through quicker and, you know, more efficiently is kind of a fantasy, because the more, the more car infrastructure you build, and just look at the 405 freeway as an example, the more cars come there. So we cannot win that game. However, we can insist on that safety, and the only way to do that is by protected bike lanes and making sure it's safe to walk on our streets, but also to slow down the cars.
So now we're going to have our next lightning round. So again, 15 seconds for all candidates. And the question is, which woman would you like to see on the $20 bill? And this is for Mr. Erickson.
My wife. My mom. Yeah, I think, I think there's many candidates out there. I wouldn't pick, I wouldn't pick one. Oh, my gosh. You guys are a piece of work. Yeah, Gorn's wife.
For me, I feel like we need to stop associating our historical figures so much with money. And I sort of don't like this question for that reason. Like, if I was forced to choose, I would choose Harriet Tubman or Rosa Parks. But I really don't believe that we should be putting our historical figures on money. Maybe we should be putting them on the sides of mountains, on monuments, you know, we should be declaring holidays in their honor. But on money, I don't think that's the right way to go.
I think Eleanor Roosevelt accomplished a lot and would be a great model. I lived in, again, when I lived in France, it was right before the Euro was created, and they had literary figures on their money. There was a Little Prince one that was gorgeous, and I think that, you know, money is ugly in the United States, and it could be a lot more interesting and a lot more, I'm sorry, my time is up.
I'm just going to go with something radical and suggest a living person. I think, I have great admiration for Sonia Sotomayor, and I think that would be very interesting to have her on the $2 bill.
I don't have anyone in particular. I mean, women have contributed so much to this country. There are so many fantastic women that have done, that would be great on some sort of legal tender. On a $20 bill, maybe a $1,000 bill or a $500 bill. So that would be my answer.
Well, I'd pick somebody that actually made me happy, so, rather than a political figure, and so, I think, you know, and it'd have to be somebody that's underrepresented, so I think I'd pick Aretha Franklin, actually. She'd be a good one.
Probably don't know who she is, but she meant something to me.
Okay, and we're going back to our regular round now. So we're starting with Smalls. And this is coming from Adili.
Santa Monica has smart bus stops. GPS on their buses send information to bus stops so that those waiting know how far away the bus is and how much time they need to wait. Metro Bus GPS information is also available on their website. This is enormously helpful, especially if you are trying to get to school on time or need to make a transfer. Buses can be a real alternative to cars. When can we expect to see these improvements in our city?
It'll start happening faster as soon as I'm elected. The, I think, I think that's an excellent, excellent point. I think that we need to look in, alternative modes of transportation are hugely important and are the, are the way to make the city work better, to make it flow better. It's better for businesses, it's better for residents. It's the only thing that can really help us with our traffic problem is, is supporting alternative modes of transportation and making our bus system, our bus system is already very good in many ways, but bringing it up to speed in exactly those technologies is imperative. There are, there are other types of even more innovative solutions, such as electric scooter sharing they have in San Francisco. It's like bike sharing, but with electric scooters, two-wheel, three-wheel, and four-wheel. You pick one up, you ride it across town, you drop it off, someone else picks it up there and rides it back to the other side of town, and everybody gets around faster and gets out of their cars. Uber and Lyft pools are also very interesting solutions, and we can create shuttles out of them by working with the private sector. Thanks very much for your question.
All right, this next question is for Mr. Tigs and is from Shelby Miyamoto Kim.
Culver City does not have school buses to pick us up and bring us home. We rely instead on cars, walking, cycling, but also on our public buses. What will you do to increase the number of buses during the times of day when we need to get to school or to get home from school?
It's an excellent question. First, I would, I would talk to the transportation director for the city to see what we could do with the resources that we have that would require communication with the school district to find out exactly what lines need to be increased, so it is not as that inconvenient for students.
And our next, oh, sorry. And our next question is for Mr. Wyant, and that's coming from Beverly Lee.
To increase the cleanliness of our parks and sidewalks, will you push for doggy bag dispensers where these are most needed?
Yes. You know, I'm a dog owner, I've been a dog, and a cat owner, and unfortunately, there's a few people who are not responsible dog owners and cat owners. It's very difficult for us, you know, for anybody to, you end up policing other people, which is not good. So anything that we can do to increase, to make it easier for people to be good citizens, we should. So absolutely, that's, that's an excellent idea. I don't know if anybody's thought of it before, but if not, we should suggest it. Thank you.
All right, this next question is for Mr. Oxon, and is from Sol Mendez.
What will you, what will you do to fix the broken and dangerous sidewalks in many of the residential and commercial areas of Culver City?
You are absolutely right. You know, we have a problem there, and we just need to prioritize. We have some extra money currently in the city, and that's going to go for infrastructure. And we have to prioritize sidewalks. And I think sidewalks and some of our streets really needs to be improved. So that's going to be one thing that I'm going to look at when I get on the city council and see how we can allocate some more money from the budget for those two items.
I'd like to tell the audience that we just have two more questions, so just sit tight. And there's going to be voting at the end as well. So for our next question is for Mr. Jay, and it's from Yvette Kitzeloff. So for our next question is for Mr. Jay and it's from Yvette Kitzler.
Abbott Kenny Boulevard is closed off to vehicle traffic for First Fridays about once a month. There are lots of food trucks, music, and dancing. People enjoy the good food, fresh air, and community spirit. It's free except for what you buy to eat. Culver City needs to have its own version of First Fridays, not just once a year at Fiesta La Biona. What will you do to ensure that our outdoor areas are used for fun activities for our own community?
Great question and it's, it's a fantastic idea. The problem is, is Abbott Kenny is a very unique, unique street. We do close down Main Street for the farmer's market. Unfortunately, our main boulevards are huge thoroughfares and would cause a huge traffic problem. So I think we would have to take a different approach. Maybe, I'd have to look at the map and see, and see what's, what areas would draw enough parking for everybody to park in, to park their bikes, and for people to come and visit it. So it would, would take a look at different areas in the city, but it's a great idea.
Thank you.
And for our last question, which is for Mr. Lee, comes from Isaiah Benson.
And I just want to say that we're gonna have a straw poll, so we're handing out the paper with the, you know, I can't think right now. The ballot. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. Okay. The crosswalk at Huron and Culver Boulevard is going to cause a terrible accident. This is used by many students going to high school, middle school, and elementary school. Many cars do not stop when the light is red and the flashing light confuses drivers. Students also do not observe the rules and do not understand them. What will you do to fix this problem?
Well, if the crosswalk itself is causing accidents, first, I think we need to look at ways to make improvements to the crosswalk itself. In many places around Southern California, particularly in Santa Monica, there are flashing lights on the street and the crosswalk to notify and on the sides. But this is one of the places where I think I would agree with Jay. I think there needs to be greater enforcement from our police department. And there have been a few instances at forums where citizens have complained about parking, traffic, or different things having to do with cars and enforcement not happening. We need to make sure that there's some way, when residents complain, that we actually have real follow-up and then some citizen oversight to make sure that the follow-up happened and not that citizens are just told that it happened.
Thank you.
Okay, so now to wrap up, we're going to allow you to have a one-minute conclusion and also time to answer previous questions that you weren't able to answer from the previous round.
All within a minute.
So, so it's a minute and a minute and a half?
Yeah, a minute and a minute and a half.
Minutes, a minute and a half. It's a, you can include another question if you want.
Me? Will we start? Okay, well, I'll start with one of the questions that was asked previously. What, like, I mentioned that there's a lot of things that we're already doing in town that nobody seems to know about. Well, one of them is that question that you asked about the smart GPSs on buses. That is underway right now in Culver City. They're in the process of installing GPSs on all the buses and when they're finished, they will be sharing the data with LA Metro so that you can use that Go LA app, I think that you mentioned. So that is already in process. It's not a dream, it's not something that we need to work on in the future. It's happening right now. The same is true of shared Uber and Lyft at the new metro sta, I mean, at the new metro station development. There's a dedicated area already set up courtesy of the planning that we had done already in the past to be ready for that. So that's ready to go when that development opens. So again, it's, it's great to know that there's, and also, I think that the First Fridays is a terrific idea. We can find a place for that. I would, I would love to go to that. And now for my one-minute closing. I'm really glad that you guys were all here. I've learned a lot from some of the questions that you came up with tonight. I didn't know a lot of stuff that I now know and I can go home and think about. I've lived here for a long time. I've been on the Planning Commission for a long time. I'm proud of what we've done on the Planning Commission. I was also a founding member of the Bicycle Coalition, Bicycle Planning, a long time ago. And I'm proud of the master plan that we did. As is mentioned, it's not perfect. It's, it's, it's an artifact of seven or eight years ago and we can make it better. And we are making it better. And Culver City is a great place to live, as you all know. We are, to some degree, a victim of our own success. Everybody knows that Culver City is a great place to live. Your friends who live in Santa Monica know that Culver City is a great place to live. And some of the problems that we have are because it is a great place. And there's things we can do to help that. We need to cut down on traffic, we need to spend more time and energy making sure that people can either get somewhere without getting in their car, or better yet, that the things, places that they want to go to are near them. Downtown is not a walkable neighborhood if you live in Fox Hills. We need to have places in Fox Hills that people want to walk to, and people in West Washington that people want to walk to, and in East Washington that people want to walk to. That will keep our city the way we like it, the way you like it. And First Fridays, I'll do that the first day I'm in office. That's a great idea. I want to come. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
This, this has been pretty fun. We've, we've gone through about six or seven forums. At least for me, this was probably the most difficult because the questions that you come up with, they're excellent and they're tough. And they're thought-provoking questions that, that really, in my mind, you're the, you're the future leaders. One of you or multiples of you are gonna be on council at some point. We live in a great city. We have the Expo opening up May 20th, going to Santa Monica. It's gonna allow you to travel back and forth. It's, it's just encouraging to see the questions that you've, you've asked. And thank you for inviting me.
Community gardens, pop-up community gardens, pop-up parks. These are things that work fantastically in other, in other forward-thinking cities around the country. We should, we should, we need to look at, at every piece of land that's not being used or that's waiting to be used for something else and think about, can, can it be a garden? Can it be, can it be a little park? We could even look at, at parking places on the street that aren't used very much and have little parks there that are temporary. So there's a lot of interesting things that we can do that, that make, that can be, not take too much time and work towards improving the city. Now, for my conclusion, I want to, I want to shout out to the most, my most important constituents in this, in this audience, Joey Alharo Small and Lyra Brody Small in the back there somewhere, who are my two eight-year-olds in the third grade at Lynn How. My other most important constituent is their mom, Joanna Brody, who's back there too, who is the president of the PTA at Lynn How and who was just named Volunteer of the Year at Lynnwood How. Some, some, some other kids out there that I might, that might know me are my students in the Spanish program at Lynn How. That's a volunteer program that's been a fantastic thing to get to participate in. And it was started by our new school board member, Kelly Kent, who's out there somewhere, and, and by, and by Joanna Brody of the PTA. You know, we, we moved here for the schools, we're gonna be here for a long time. We have middle school and high school to go through. And, and I will be an advocate for students for that whole time and an advocate for schools in the city. So I hope I get to serve you all. Thanks so much for having us here tonight.
So for the 30 seconds on the question, it's kind of a combination between the idea of having more affordable, fun things to do and then the Abbott Kenny First Friday. It's kind of the same thing, right? Well, I helped organize the two Siklavias that came to Culver City. I'm hoping that some of you participated in those. It's when you close down the street to cars and then people on bikes, on skateboards, and wheelchairs, and every other way except a motorized mode of transportation can enjoy the open streets. The plan is to do this every spring so we can look forward to having more of these in the future and they are grant-funded, which is even better. But we need to do more. Like, we used to have an art walk that the city funded when it had special redevelopment funding for that. But one of the barriers to the art walk, to the success of the art walk, is that there's way too much traffic along Washington Boulevard. So I think there too, for art walk, you have to close down the street like the First Friday so people can really, you know, first of all, cross the street, but also bring the party into the public space. The whole idea of Siklavia is to make open space, use our streets as open space. It's, it's a beautiful concept and it's, and it's incredibly successful. So I look forward to bringing that back to Culver City. So now for the closing. A lot of the subjects that came up tonight are things that I've been working on, not only these past four years in the City Council, but before that as a community activist. Equity, sustainability, affordability, safety, and then basically having that vision for the future. And the vision for the future is really back to sustainability because if we're not taking care of our city, our streets, and ourselves, we are not offering you the future that you deserve. And you know what? It's on us. I mean, these are our decisions. I'm on the Sustainability Subcommittee, I'm on the Oil Drilling Subcommittee, I'm on the Expo Construction Authority Board of Directors. I'm, I've forged regional partnerships. I'm afraid I'm out of time, but if anybody wants to talk later on. And my number one goal is to inspire you to lead as you grow as well.
Okay, and I'm gonna try to do all of these things together and not separate. But if you go to my website, you'll notice that the big three prongs of my campaign are environment, accountability, and fairness. And I feel like that's what we've been talking about tonight in some large degree. When we spoke a bit about traffic in a number of different areas and then different crosswalks, what came to mind was a City Council meeting a few weeks ago where we voted to, well, the council voted to remove yet another crosswalk. I think that's taken the city backwards in the wrong direction. We need to be a city that's more walkable, more bikeable, and more connected to public transportation. And overall, that will make us more sustainable. In terms of the ideas around having a First Friday, if we close down Main Street for Tuesday, why can't we do it for Friday? Like, I, I think that would bring traffic, more, more foot traffic downtown and less car traffic and sort of solve a number of the different problems that we've been talking about tonight. But also, I wanted to mention that I am entirely in favor of left turn signals. I come from the South, so when I moved to the Los Angeles area, I was sort of aghast that, you know, basically a red light means turn left as fast as you can. It took, it took a very long time for me to get used to that. I don't really drive that much anymore, so it's not as much of a concern. But I think we really need to be proactive about that because it is about safety and it's about sustainability and it's about getting people out of their cars. And I think in general, if we have enough money to fund some infrastructure improvements, then we should have enough money to fund outdoor and indoor activities for youth, in particular, jobs for youth. Because, you know, when people talk about youth doing this and youth doing that and youth delinquency or youth crime, it's because you don't have anything to do. So we can do something about that.
So first off, I want to say thank you for inviting me here tonight. Michelle, thank you. And the students, you've been applauding us all night. You guys need to applaud yourselves. You guys came up with some really tough questions. Secondly, to the BSU students, with what they faced on Friday, you guys need to come together as a community and stand up against, basically what that is, is boiling and something I strongly disagree with. One of the things I did for 20 years is keep this, keep this city safe. And I really liked the question that the young man had about Culver and Huron. And one of the things I did as a motor officer, I'd actually pull my police motorcycle off the bike path and sit there, monitor that specific light. Because when they first put it in, no one would stop at it. And every day, students would come, say hello to me while I'm sitting there on the bike, and then when the signal would change, someone would run the light and I would actually get cheers from the kids as I'd go off and chase down that violator and ride them. What, what happens is with, again, direct enforcement like that, we were talking about the, the parking, is you impact the daily routine of, of drivers. And when they see a motor cop sitting there and people are getting tickets, eventually they're gonna take notice. And I hope that I end up getting circled on some of your guys' cards and, again, thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Thank you, guys. This is really exciting and I really like the reference to Lynnwood How because that's where my two sons went. And my oldest son now, he is, he's a third-year medical student in Chicago. So I nowadays refer to Lynnwood How as a pre-med. If you want to have a good base and get into pre-med, you go to Lynnwood How. So you have some issues that you brought up there, I think. And it, it all comes back to a couple of my main points is that we have some traffic issues around the school. We need to start looking at some other drop-off alternatives, how we can drop, the younger kids can be dropped off in another way. We need to look at how more of everyone can bike to school. Who wants to bike at Bayona Creek Bike Path at the 5 o'clock this time of the year when it's pitch dark? No one. Where's the lights? Why don't we light that up? Why don't we open up a couple of more access points? There is a few other tributaries that comes into Bayona Creek. We have one up from Washington Boulevard. Maybe we should look at building a bike path on that piece of land. There is a lot of things we can do to make traffic a little less obtrusive and actually have a little more exercise. Am I going over into my, I can continue? Oh, great. So that's, and then the whole commuter issue with buses and so on, that's also one thing. You know, growing up in, in Sweden, I seen, I biked to school my whole life and everyone did. And we, we took public transportation. And the thing here is that public transportation has been designed for people who doesn't have cars. But we need to start looking at that as a commuter system. We need to design it for people who have cars, and leave it at home one day or two days a week. Actually, we need a bus system that when you jump on it, you know you're getting on time to school or to work. You need to have it connect with the Expo. You don't have to wait 40 minutes at Expo. Where's the bus? There's a lot of those things that I think other countries, other cities has figured out. We can figure it out too. And I'm also known for getting things done. People talk about sitting on a lot of committees and, and boards and so on, and I've done a lot of that. But one thing I leave every place with is that people said, "We got a lot of things done when you were chairman," you're on. So that's one thing I can promise you. Getting on the City Council, I'm gonna get a few of these things done. Thank you for listening.
And lastly, we wanted to say a quick thank you to Ms. Genevieve Gilbert Roth. So just please have a hand for her for just organizing this. We heard that you were, this was your last year, so we just wanted to say thank you, thank you so much for organizing this, or helping to organize this program. And then I think that's it. That concludes the evening. Thank you to all the candidates for your time and your efforts in answering our questions. And thank you for the students for having, having your questions. And don't forget to vote and turn in your ballot. Check three. And then please pick up your trash and recycle as you leave. So yeah, you can vote for three candidates, okay, on that ballot. Great.
Thank you, moderators, and thank you, Michelle. Drive home safe, guys. Good night.